Seven o'clock. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 22 planning board meeting. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just.
There are seven items on the agenda this evening, but two of them have been removed. The first one is slated to be first. It was the Hearn Pole Barn. That was removed until the next meeting. And item four, Mobile Graphics Building, is also removed until the next meeting. So if you're here for either of those, you don't need to stay unless you like going through all this. So we have three meeting minutes for the 11th and 25th of July and the 8th of August. Has everyone had a chance to look at them, Ernie?
Nope.
No? Would you like to hold off approval of the meeting minutes until?
Well, I don't have any comment.
Oh, you don't have any comments. I was just wondering if you had a chance to review them all.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Fair enough. Scott was absent for those, so he will abstain.
Right.
I will take a motion for approval of all three of those meeting minutes.
I'll move.
Ernie moves. Al seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Joe's absent, and Scott abstains.
Right.
So they are passed. Of course, mine is received. I didn't see any. Anyway. Boards and committee updates. Is Mike going in here? Probably not. Kim, next meeting agenda?
So your next meeting will be September 12. And you indicated that the Hearn Pole Barn was removed from tonight. It's tentatively scheduled for that meeting. That's at 218 Hidden Brook Trail. Applicant is requesting to construct a 46-foot by 72-foot metal pole barn for personal recreational purposes. And then a public hearing for Mobile Graphics at 7120 Lane Road. It's a site plan application. An applicant is requesting to approve or to demolish the pre-existing barn shed and construct a 7,400-square-foot building to support their existing business operations. And then any carryovers from tonight.
Any questions for Kim?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Before we get going, I neglected to read the announcements. It's our standard, but there are emergency exits in case there is one to your left and right. And the restrooms are out the door in the back of the room and to the left. If you haven't already, please sign in on the sign-in sheets at the back table. We'd like to have a good record of attendance. If you have any need for contacting the Planning and Zoning Department, there are business cards in the back table with email address, phone numbers for the department. Also on the back table is a copy of resolutions that will be read tonight along with the agenda. Please silence your cell phones. And if you have any conversations you need to have amongst yourselves, please take it out of the room and close the doors so that it doesn't disturb those who are presenting or up before the board. So with that, item one was the Hearn Pole Barn. Item two is the Hept Pond. Public hearing was closed on this. We did see this before. We have prepared a draft resolution, but we have some items to, I guess, review on this as well. So someone here for the Pole Barn?
Yes.
Come on up.
Scott Hep, owner.
So you did provide us with an updated drawing.
That's correct.
And I don't know, Susie, do you have that on your list? Perfect.
Did you get a chance to look at it, Wes? All right.
Anything that you wanted to highlight about it for the general audience or the?
I would've.
Okay. I'll go to Wes, since he's had a chance to review it. Have you got any comments, Wes?
Yeah. So first of all, just to step back a little bit, our July 31, 2023 comment letter, the applicant has responded to with detail sheets and response on New York State DEC dam criteria requirements. We've received a response from MRB Group on that particular question. Slope stabilization erosion control, we've got that information. And then, as a result of the last planning board meeting, there seemed to be maybe a bit of a discrepancy between what was depicted on a concept plan versus what the applicant articulated in identifying that really what he intended to construct out on the property was a little bit smaller than what was depicted on the plan. So as a result of that, the applicant and Labella, we did a little coordination with MRB Group, and they did provide an updated plan that identifies the information that we were looking for, including the limited disturbance line, including the silt fence, and then some of the details that we were looking for. Silt fence and roll erosion control.
Identify the liner.
Installation. Is the liner identified on here?
Yeah.
Yep. So we're happy with that. This plan would satisfy, this should satisfy Labella's comments. And we still need to provide a letter to close the loop on our comments, but we don't see any issues with what's been presented in front of us. I know the draft resolution does have a particular condition in it, which indicates that the applicant's, one of the conditions, draft conditions, is that the applicant's engineer verify the size and depth of the pond upon completion, and that it was constructed in accordance with the approved site plan. So if the planning board were to approve this site plan, one of the conditions is that the applicant provide or coordinate with their engineer so that, you know, asking the design engineer to provide some form of certification, written certification and verification that it was constructed in accordance with this.
Okay.
So.
There was a short discussion on the depth of the pond?
Yep.
They, it looks like it was raised a foot or so from the bottom?
Nine and a half feet.
Okay.
Yep.
I remember it was like 10, 10 and a half to the spillway.
And the limit of disturbance is less than what it was shown previously. And they're about a half an acre.
Yeah.
So that satisfies our condition.
Okay.
Our question.
All right. Wes or Al, any questions? Okay. Ernie?
Nope. Wes, I.
Got it?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. And I have none, other than just appreciate the coordination you guys made and to satisfy the need, the questions that we had. So since the public hearing is closed, we do have a draft resolution. If you guys are all set with that, I can, I can read that through. So, application 30 SB 2023, Hept Pond Project on 6755 Gillis Road, whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, and there are nine of them, including Labella's review letter dated July 31, 2023, and comments. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Scott Hep, site plan entitled Hept Pond Project, received by the planning board, June 30, 2023, last revised August 21, 2023, which I assume is the date on the drawing we have. Somewhere?
The date of the drawing?
I see the date is 6, 2023, at least the one I have.
Last revised August 21, 2023.
Okay. There it is. Thank you. Be approved of the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. Comments in a letter dated July 14 from stormwater management manager be addressed. That comments in a letter dated July 21, 2023, from the code officer be addressed. And that comments in a letter dated July 31, 2023, from Labella Associates be addressed. If they've already all been addressed, not one need to be concerned with these, other than, I think Wes mentioned that he's to close the loop on his. Ongoing conditions, items, item one is standard. Item two, building permit be obtained for the pump house dining area before the start of construction. That any exterior lighting be code compliant and approved by the code enforcement officer. Number four, the pre-construction meeting be held before the start of construction. And that the, number five, the applicant's engineer verify the size and depth of the pond upon completion. That is per the approved site plan. So I'm assuming that anything of the size that you're showing or smaller is not an issue, but they certainly can.
Understood.
Verify that. So.
Drop a string and a line and measure it for you.
Perfect. And be further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. So on that resolution, I'll entertain a motion for approval?
Move.
Ernie moves?
Second.
Al seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried four zero. You're all set.
Good to go.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have three on the agenda. 580 Fisher's Station parking expansion. It's an open public hearing. The applicant is requesting approval to install 33 additional parking spots to support a growing business. No worries. Yep. Used to be you'd have to ask if it's still wet or not.
Okay. Good evening. At the last meeting in July that we attended.
Can I just name and?
Oh, sure. My name's Joseph Burkhardt. I'm the managing member of 580 Fisher Station Drive LLC, the ownership group of the building.
Thank you.
At the last meeting, it was recommended that we meet with Labella, Ontario County Soil and Water, and the town stormwater management person, Keith. And we had that meeting. Out of that meeting came a handful of minor alterations to the drawings, including some additional calculations that the town and Labella requested, which were completed. There's a revised drawing that I put in front of you here today that included some additional riprap. There's two locations on here, and these are the only two additions to this drawing that are different than what you were presented last week. The first is additional riprap to extend to the bed of the creek right next to the driveline. And then the second, on the bottom left of the drawing, is some additional riprap and cleaning around the outlet of that existing storm, storm pipe.
Oh, is that pointing to your left? This one here, this long one?
Absolutely correct. Yep. Those are the only two changes. Now, caveat with that work. We're happy to do it. We would just like to complete that as part of the culvert project that we discussed last meeting. That culvert project is currently with Ontario County Soil and Water. They are working on the permitting with the Army Corps. And I appreciate you guys putting in here an October 2024 completion date. I will do my best. I will say, though, it is completely out of my hands, and the Army Corps kind of has a schedule of their own. But I will do my best. I'd like to complete the riprap work as part of that project, because if I do it now, I'll have to rip it out and do it again. So I would appreciate some flexibility on that. But other than that, it is my understanding that we have acquiesced all comments and requests from Labella, the town, and Ontario County.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll start again with Wes. And I know that you were, have been involved with this, as has the town staff.
Yeah. Mary Stubline from our office has been heavily involved with the correspondence and communication with the applicant. And Keith Maynard, the stormwater program manager here. And I think generally, most of our comments have been addressed. I do have a question for the applicant, you know, recognizing that some of these improvements over here, to what degree is the adjoining property owner participating in the culvert replacement, if at all?
They are not participating. By easement, it is our responsibility.
Okay. All right. Some, it might be worthwhile, maybe to have a note on the plan that indicates, you know, the presence of the easement. Maybe I overlooked it. Presence of the easement, just very confirming, you know, kind of your responsibility.
Sure. It is in the title, and that was submitted to the county upon acquisition of the property. So it is documented.
Okay.
Wes, is that the culvert that's at the bottom right here? Is that this one? Or is it different?
Yes.
Okay.
And furthermore, the town is very aware of that easement, as the culvert replacement project came into being probably around five years ago. And it started for the town, it started with improvements further up the creek by the other landowner. And it's kind of trickled down slowly. So I think there's, if you'd like us to add it, I'm happy to do it. But I think there's good awareness of whose responsibility for, who's responsible for what regarding that creek.
All right.
Is it shown on the culvert repair plan that you're referring to on this drawing? It says, see culvert repair plan for details. Would that plan have the details on it?
I believe, so what they're referring to is a riprap installation detail. And yes, that is on that set of plans.
Okay. All right.
Okay. All right. And I understand there's an underground stormwater chamber over in this area?
Correct.
Parking lot? Okay.
Correct.
So I don't think Labella has anything further. I think we're, I think we're pretty satisfied with the applicant's responses. We've got a Marathon Engineering letter here dated August 8 with some responses to our, to our comments. And I think Mary Stubline, if we could have her, you know, provide a close the loop comment for the, for your record and for the town's file, I think we're, I think we're okay with that. And we're also okay, certainly, with the applicant's request leaving the culvert replacement, you know, to the later date. Because really, that wasn't part of your initial site plan application. You were just looking for parking expansion.
Correct.
And we recognize that that is a separate project in itself.
Correct.
In and of itself. So, okay. I'm all set.
It is? Okay. Great. Any questions from the board? Ernie?
Nope.
And Scott?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I think that adding the libran page of the affected easement on this drawing would just be helpful for record-keeping purposes.
Okay.
If there is an easement there, I mean, right now, the way it shows, you don't see it. So it's hard to know what the permission aspect of this is. And assuming that what the applicant is saying is correct, I would add that note in the event that this needs to be referred to in the future, just so it can be easily understood.
Sure. Would providing a survey that shows that be sufficient?
Can you just indicate by note on the plan?
Yeah, we can do whichever you like. I just think, I know that I have the survey readily available, so I'm trying to satisfy everybody as quickly as possible. But that's fine. We'll make the note and go from there.
I think that in these projects, which we tend to pull up later on, as time goes on, just being able to find that information sometimes at your fingertips, looking at this drawing versus finding other drawings, sometimes that's very helpful.
No problem.
Al?
No questions.
Okay. All right. As do I. I think I'm satisfied with everything you've done. And so unless there's any other questions, I know that we, the public hearing is still open, so I should at least give the public an opportunity to ask any questions before we close that public hearing. Is there anyone out there that has a question or would like to address the board?
I'm Brian Ray with, I live at 6831 Collier Crossing. I also am the business owner to the west. And I wasn't, I came for a different thing, but I'm, we've been in talks with the town in regards to the stormwater management system that's down 580 Fisher's Run. And this looks like it's upstream from us. So again, I haven't been in the details. This is kind of a last minute question, but just is there any impact expected on water coming downstream? Is that all, I assume part of what this additional culvert and everything is to mitigate any kind of downstream?
I, go ahead.
Flow?
Yeah, I think, I don't know the exact details. However, what we understand, what I, what I understand from this application, you know, the applicant's expanding their parking. And there was some, there was some concern even before the expanded parking that some of the runoff coming from the site was maybe adversely affecting, you know, either the area right to the south and then downstream towards your property. So what the stormwater program manager, and Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, wanted to see some additional measures to protect what's, you know, protect downstream properties. And that's what this, this project is designed to do.
Okay.
And there's been some coordination with Ontario County Soil and Water Conservation District.
All right. Excellent. It was new to me, so I appreciate it.
Understand.
No problem.
Any, look, do you have a comment about that? Are you all set?
No, I, you know, the big one is getting this culvert figured out. And it's kind of been a nightmare, you know, just because of the age of it and the depth of it and figuring out what had happened then and correlating that to what the Army Corps requirements are today and all that. And I think what we're doing here not only is going to improve the overall runoff, but the quality of runoff as well. And once this is done, and I don't know how long Army Corps is going to take, I can't say that caveat enough, but I think when it's done, it's going to be performing functionally as good as it can be. And then, you know, certainly, as far as our impact downstream will be mitigated as sufficiently as we reasonably can. So I wouldn't be too concerned about it. I think we got a long way to go, but I wouldn't be overly concerned about it.
It sounds like town staff and our engineer agree with that, so.
Yeah, I think we, you know, checked in with everyone on this. Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Hearing or seeing no other interest in comments from the public, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Al moves?
Second.
Ernie seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
So public hearing is closed. And if you guys are all set with any other comments or questions, I will read the resolution for.
Okay.
This project. So, application 29 SB 2023, 580 Fisher Station Parking Lot Expansion at 580 Fisher Station Drive, whereas the planning board made the following findings a fact, and there are nine of them. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on August 22, 2023, and identified no significant impacts, therefore be it resolved that the project 580 Fisher Station Parking Lot Expansion will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared. And now there furthermore, therefore be it resolved that the application of Quattro Consulting Group's site plan entitled 580 Fisher Station Parking Lot Expansion, drawn by Marathon Engineering dated February 6, 2023, received by the planning board June 23, 2023, and last revised August 18, 2023, planning board application 29 SB 2023 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. Item one is standard. Number two, comments in a letter dated August 21 from Labella Associates be addressed. Number three, comments from stormwater manager dated July 7, 2023 be addressed. Ongoing conditions, number one is standard. Number two, that the property owner pursues and/or cause the replacement of the two drainage culverts under the driveway, providing access to 580 Fisher Station Drive per consultation, direction, and satisfaction of the town's stormwater program manager, Ontario County Soil and Water Conservation District, town engineer, and other entity as may be identified by the Town of Victor. Said culvert replacement shall be completed by October 2024 unless such a deadline is extended for cause by mutual agreement between involved property owners and the Town of Victor Stormwater Program Manager. And I think that language probably would satisfy your concern about the date.
I, yes, I think we're okay.
Okay. Be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. So on that resolution, do I hear a motion for approval?
I would just add the condition on the libran page of the easement.
Make sure you speak into your mic.
Sorry, I would add the libran page of the easement that we're talking about. Be added to the plan.
So noted. I think that would probably be before I sign the drawing and Wes would look for that.
Yep, correct.
Okay. Okay. So do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Ernie moves?
I'll second.
And Scott seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried four zero.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Just a note of a quick correction on the reference to the Labella letter. It was dated July 21, 2023 versus August 21.
Oh.
July 21. Same.
This one here, it says August instead of July. I mean, that was yesterday. Thanks, Wes.
Yep.
Okay. The Mobile Graphics Building proposal was moved to the next meeting. And number five, Village East Apartments Site Plan Modification. This public hearing is still open. 7410 Forest Trail owner is Conifer Village at Eastview LLC. Applicant is requesting approval to construct 15 new parking spaces and corresponding retaining wall at the west side of the parking lot with a height of one to five feet above grade.
Hello, and good evening. My name is James Ritzenthaler, before you again, on behalf of Pastoral Associates and Conifer. Yeah, so here again, we've, we've gotten our PDD amendment from the Town of Victor to add the parking spaces. And as we've discussed previously, we're moving to do an additional seven spaces above the original 15 land banked. These will help the, help the site in stopping from, stopping people from continuing to park in the not approved parking spaces that have been striped on site. So in total, we are proposing to add 22 spaces. This will increase our count from the 86 legal and approved spaces that exist on site now to bump us up to 108 total. And this will be beneficial, given our 88 units and 108 total bedrooms on site. And we believe that it will satisfy all the parking issues that everyone seems to know of on the site. Just a couple of comments. We have gotten all of our comment letters back. We just got our Labella comment letter yesterday. Preparing to send all those responses back tomorrow. Just key, a couple of key points that I wanted to run through from all the different comment letters. First off, on our stormwater comment letter, it was noted, any impacts to a decrease in the stormwater management area? Just wanted to note that there is not going to be a decrease in the stormwater management area. The retaining walls in the parking that you see encroaches into the grass area, but that is all hill. On the bottom of all those walls are about, the elevations are 905. And the top of the stormwater management area is not for another three feet below that. So, so we are not proposing any encroachment in stormwater management areas. And a couple of the comments included details that we're missing for the outlet structures and all that in the, in the pond that we've cleaned up. Labella also mentioned a couple of comments for, for the plans and supporting kelks. And we are going to be moving forward with those following any approval that we get on this project, reaching out to further design and get more details on the wall. Yeah, I believe that's pretty much just the key notes that I wanted to mention from our comment letters that we've gotten so far. And just open up to any questions that you guys might have for the public.
Thank you. Wes, would you care to comment?
Sure. Yeah, Labella, we do have a few comments on the, on the site plan application. We don't have, we're not opposed to what they're proposing here. And we feel that it can be done safely with the proposed retaining walls to support the loads of the vehicles that are going to park there. We are requesting supporting calculations and some profiles to support the proposed design. And also just some clarification of drainage, where drainage, where the drainage behind the wall might be conveyed to. Otherwise, just some detailed. just some, some detailed identification of notes on the, on the plans, that'll, that'll be helpful. And just be sure that some of the notes are specific to this project in general. So that's, that's, that's really all, all we've got. So I think, I think the design is, is a good design, provided that we have the supporting calculations.
Okay. Thank you, Wes. Board members, Al, questions?
No questions.
Okay, Scott?
No, none. Nope, I have none.
That was pretty straightforward. It's, public hearing is still open, so I'll open up the floor if anyone in the audience was interested in addressing the applicant or the board on this application. Okay. Don't believe we have a prepared resolution.
I do.
We have one. All right. Well, first things first, I guess, hearing, no questions from the, from the public. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Al moves?
Okay.
Bernie seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. We do have a draft resolution. So I will, you guys are okay? Go forward and read the resolution with glasses. So, with the Village East Site Plan Modification, Application 31 SB 2023, it's 7410 Forest Trail, whereas the Planning Board made the following findings effect, and there are 12 of them. Is the letter August 21st, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Want to make sure we're getting our dates right. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on August 22nd, 2023, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project Village East Apartments Site Plan Modification will not have a significant impact on the environment and not a negative declaration be prepared. And be it further resolved that the application of Conifer Village at Eastview LLC Site Plan entitled Village East Apartments Site Plan Modification, drawn by Passer Associates, dated June 2023, received by the Planning Board July 18th, 2023, Planning Board Application 31 SB 2023 be approved with the following conditions. Is this the correct date for their, the current drawing? Okay, it says June 2023, so, okay. I don't know if there's any revisions, then there are not. All right. So, conditions to be addressed prior to chairman's signature on the site plan. One, that no signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25th, 1996. Number two, that the comments in a letter dated August 21st, 2023, from LaBella Associates be addressed. Number three, that the comments from the code enforcement officer dated July 22nd, 2023, be addressed. Number four, that comments from the fire marshal dated August 11th, 2023, be addressed. Number five, that comments from Stormwater Manager dated July 24th, 2023, be addressed. And number six, that the stormwater, that a stormwater facility maintenance agreement be executed for the stormwater facility on the property. Ongoing conditions, there is one which is standard, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. So with that resolution, do I hear a motion for approval?
Move.
Bernie moves?
Second.
All seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Married four zero. So, unless you. I folded those back. All right. Number six, Collier Park. Public hearing is still open on this. 606 County Route 9, Application 01 PS 2023. Owner is Comarc Holdings. Applicant is requesting approval to subdivide a 12.925 acre parcel into six individual lots with an existing house located at Lot 2. A new pole barn is proposed for Lot 1 and Lot 2. This will be the second step in a three-step process for a major subdivision. Sketch plan was approved on July 11th, 2023, and the public hearing for this is still open. Good evening.
Good evening. Brennan Marks with Marks Engineering, representing the client. I think you guys are still familiar with this, but I'd be glad to introduce the project once more. We're looking for a six-lot subdivision, just under 13-acre lot. There's an existing single-family house on the corner of Collier Crossing and County Road 9. Some of the changes that's happened since the last time we saw was actually a relocation of a house from Collier Crossing Road. We moved it down to County Road 9. That was due to a, a fire code issue. Fire code basically states that you can have up to 30 resident, single-family residents on a dead-end street. So we actually, with the, the fifth house on Collier Crossing, we would have had 31, so we moved it around to County Road 9. So there is a 30 space, 30, after this is completed and the houses are built, there will be 30 residents on Collier Crossing if it's, if it's approved. So, we've requested two waivers from this board. The one was flagged by the code enforcement officer, basically talking about roof, roof drainage. The code states that the roof drainage needs to be piped to a closed drainage system on the, on the subdivision street. The, we're in agreement with the code enforcement officer basically stating that piping it to infiltration trenches like we have shown is actually a better practice, is a more of a green practice. It promotes infiltration and, and quality treatment of the stormwater runoff. Second waiver is just a, kind of touches on the same thing we talked about with the 30 lots. The section 2.93, which is part of the subdivision's design requirements for length of roads. One of the sections in there talks about the maximum of 25 single-family residents on a dead-end street. Appears the intent of this code is, is, is either fire protection, emergency vehicle access, or, or basically limiting developments for highway maintenance. We're not proposing any subdivision streets here. We're basically infilling this parcel on an existing street. So no public infrastructure is included in this proposal. We did actually do a little bit more research. Well, actually, first I'd like to go back. It is allowable by New York State Uniform Code to have up to 30 single-family residents on a dead-end street. We did a little bit of research around the town, looking at other developments, and with, quickly, we noted two of them, which has been recently approved, which were, have over 30, oh, sorry, well, over 30, but over 25 single-family residents on a single dead-end street. One of them is Silverton Glen, which is Ashwood Lane, has 37 residents on a dead-end street. Then you have the Fairways Phase 1, which the road name is Challenger Circle, or Challenge Circle, that has 40 single-family residents on a dead-end street. Those were approved in 2015 and 2010, respectively. Actually, just quickly looking, we did notice up on County Road 9, there's another subdivision that has Stone Lee, which has 35 single-family residents on a dead-end street. So, the precedence in the town has been set by some of these other developments. Again, we're not proposing any public infrastructure for this. This is just an infill project, so.
Questions from the board?
Leave Silverton Glen, Glen is a, comes around and back up to the, the main highway.
There's one spur, which is the Ashwood that comes up and it's, that ends with cul-de-sac.
Looks to me like you're in compliance with the 30 home maximum, which I'm familiar with, the state fire code. You're complying with it, regardless if there are other developments in Victor. I think he's complying with it, so.
Yeah, we've
I don't see that as an issue.
Occasionally given variances to the 25 house or unit subdivision.
Does Victor have a 25 house?
Yeah, that's
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's, well, the 30 is what.
30 is the state.
Eight. But the, the town adopted a 25 unit limit, and we have given minor variances up to 30 or so. Silverton Glen's kind of a different animal as a site. I don't recall exactly how that went, but there were, there was fire coverage and, and access, emergency access, and multiple routes through there.
Did Bob Graham comment on this? I thought I saw something in your letter about him saying.
Yeah, he basically said it's compliant with the New York State Fire Code. He has no objection to it. Mark yours also looked at it, and he had no objection to it.
And typically, if we've given a variance, it's because we don't have objection from our, the fire department and.
Right.
Just clarification, waivers, right.
Mm-hmm. So, I mean, typically, the, part of the problem is you get these very deep cul-de-sacs.
I understand that.
Make it a lot more difficult to service with egress and, and ingress, bypassing, you know, emergency vehicles on the way in or out. So, that was part of it. I was on the board at the time that we adopted that 25 unit.
Mm-hmm.
Limit.
It also, it also has a, the, the, the standard also says with public water, which makes me think it may be a stagnant thing with a dead-end main, which may be an issue.
And then we've done other ones, if I recall, where you have more units than, than 30, and the developer puts some on sprinklers too, right? That's an option.
Yeah, if it's multiple units, I think. I don't know if houses themselves had to have sprinklers.
Scott, I think you're right on that. As long as, if they have sprinklers, they're gonna have them.
I think single-family can overcome it to apply sprinklers.
Hmm, okay.
What do you think, Wes?
So, just wanted to refresh the Planning Board's memory. Some of you were on the Planning Board back in 2012. So LaBella did some research on this particular provision in the Design and Construction Standards, Mark Tarian specifically. And as you know, some of the regulatory background, that particular provision in the Design and Construction Standards indicates dead-end streets and developments with public water shall, shall provide access to not more than 25 single homes. And then also, length of dead-end streets and subdivisions without public water shall be limited to 900 feet due to restrictions for fire protection. So there were a couple of findings that we had. One, the challenges encountered by firefighters and the attendant risk to public safety when it is necessary to deliver a sufficient emergency supply of water 1,000 feet or more from the nearest intersection. So, in, in, in the event of a fire upon a dead-end street where no hydrants are available, a second pumper truck would generally be stationed at the nearest water supply, either a hydrant near the closest intersection or portable pond placed by firefighters to which multiple tankers would then travel and discharge water. In such an instance, the second pumper is utilized to deliver a supply of water to an attack pumper stationed near the fire scene. The pumper first arriving at the scene would typically serve as the attack pumper and would lay a large diameter hose. Number two, reduced quality of life, or livability, within the single-family residences located at the entrance to a dead-end street due to a number of vehicles that must pass by the residence as they enter or leave the dead-end street. So, and there's, there's a little bit more back, background here, but just one of the recommendations that we made as, as far as the underlying basis and apparent independence of those two requirements, the length of the street versus the number of residences on the street, recommend the following be considered in evaluating requested waivers. For the number of single-family residences on a dead-end street, in evaluating requests for waivers to allow development of more than 25 single-family residences upon that dead-end street, the primary focus should be upon the traffic volume anticipated at the dead-end entrance and exit, and the attendant effects upon quality of life at residences located at the entrance. As already indicated in the standards, mitigation of these potential impacts as a consequence of greater front setback for properties near the dead-end access or buffering along the roadway for properties near the dead-end access could also be considered. So, that's, that's kind of a summary of, of what LaBella's research indicated in, in 2012, when, as we have come across this request for waiver in previous projects. So we can provide, we can reissue that memo to the, to the board, so you have it in your.
What, what is the length of the road?
The existing.
You said 900 feet was a number in there? Oh yeah, you probably don't have the length of the road.
I can measure it here.
Yeah, I got it up, Wes.
Okay.
So from the cul-de-sac near Ray's property down to Route 9, 1,894 feet. There is a fire hydrant just to the west of Addyway, which is the private drive to the south. About, I'll call it two-thirds in. There's other fire hydrants along there.
I just want to point out, there is a fire truck pull-off here. Next to this is the sub, this is the pond that's across the street.
I think the concerns with the length of the road and the hydrants and pumping capability would have been relevant in the original design, but since this is inside that envelope, I don't, I don't know it's really.
Yeah, we're not extending the cul-de-sac. We're not doing that sort of thing with this application.
Yeah, we're not lengthening the road.
Yeah, and the discussion of coverage, I think, is covered by the fact that there is fire hydrant accessibility along this road. I don't know exactly what it is, all the way up at the cul-de-sac. Looking at street view, I don't see one. Oh yeah, there's one right at the end, right by Ray's driveway, I believe. So, that staging of fire equipment and things like that doesn't, wouldn't seem to be an issue with this subdivision in that approach to the provision of the 25 or 30 unit. It's only if the, the fire hydrant is all the way at the end is the length an issue. So, I, I think that is certainly worth considering in this waiver.
And Bob Graham's, our support.
Right, yeah. So I think we, in general, we do have support from the town, both Fire Department and Highway Department for, for this. It's not going to really affect the performance or the safety of the public on this subdivision. So, as far as traffic goes, volume of traffic coming in and out, these are new homes that are going to feel it the most, rather than impacting all the homes that are there already with additional traffic on an extension. So, I don't see that as a big issue, because people will know what they're getting when they, when they buy a place, and the, the volume of traffic along the road. Al, any comments, questions?
No, nothing other than what we just discussed.
Okay. The public hearing's still open. Is there anyone here who is interested in commenting or asking a question of the developer or the board? Brian's over there, he's ready to come up.
Good evening. So again, Brian Ray, 6831 Collier Crossing. I live at the, the top of the hill. I appreciate the background in, in looking into the 25 versus 30. I learned a lot there, Wes, when you were going through everything. I guess some of the thoughts on that would be, one, I heard in there about the setback for those that are at the bottom of the street. I'm speaking perhaps on, on behalf of others who live in those first few homes. They, they have anecdotally talked to me about the, the concern of the additional traffic coming in regardless. That intersection's a tricky one, too. I mean, it's a 55 mile an hour county road down there, so that, that is what it is. Another thought, I, I don't know on this from an engineering standpoint, but from a water, water pressure for usage within homes, is I assume that as long as there's no negative impact on those, you know, houses there of what the, how the infrastructure was designed originally, I hope that that would be considered.
Honestly, you're reminding me of that, that very question that I was thinking of earlier before I get going on that tangent, but I don't know, Wes, is that something that they need to evaluate?
Well, I, I guess one of the questions I have is, do we have any documented instances where water pressure has been an issue elsewhere in this neighborhood, in the Collier Crossing neighborhood? Do we know?
Well, you guys are at the high end.
I live at the top, so. I mean, we're, we're definitely, I would like more, let's just say, but it hasn't been, like, we're not getting what we need. We have a, a barn that we put in, and the water out there is, is pretty, pretty weak. But, again, from a calculation standpoint, adding 20% more houses, does that have a negative impact?
Okay. I don't know. Okay, I don't know the answer to that question.
Pipe comes down, it's actually from the top of Gillis, down the steep part of Gillis and around. So, I think it's getting the head pressure from pretty good elevation, but if it's just something that would need to see the faucet-
Pop it more.
Slow down as a result of any kind of project like this. I guess another, I don't know what, what part of the process this would be inserted, but I mentioned a month ago in regards to some covenants and restrictions is part of the original subdivision back. This is a 2007 document that I'd be happy to make available to the, to the applicant, but we would, on behalf of the folks there, to preserve, if not enhance, the value of the street, we'd like, as architectural standards and covenants and things like that, that would be certainly, we'd, we'd want at a minimum included in any kind of final considerations for, for design.
Is there an HOA there now?
There, it hasn't been active, to be honest.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we have this document that we've all kind of lived by, but as far as actively getting together and-
Yeah.
You know, that, we haven't been active in that.
So, for example, if, if someone were, if someone did something to their home that was not in, not congruent with what those standards are that you have?
Right.
How, how is that enforced? Does that?
We haven't had those instances, so I think if it did happen, there would be, whether it's, it's blowing the dust off this and pulling together the committee that, the way this is, is written, to put that governance piece in place, we'd, we'd move in that direction. We haven't had to do that yet.
Okay. Is, is that a deed restriction? Is that what you're talking about? Parcels of land, the other properties within-
Every, every original owner did, did, did sign one of these and I don't know where they might be on record. This is just a printout. This is an original. But again, I can, I have an electronic-
Does that, does that apply to the subject property as well? Through those, through those restrictions that you're pointing out there? Do they cover?
No, the parcel was separate, so I assume-
Okay, so this is-
This is not, I don't believe, broken off during your, that subdivision's formation, I guess.
No, it was, it was, it was a different parcel entirely.
This parcel would be optional for that. So, that, and that's a private, I think that's usually a private issue. It's not something
Yeah, it's not something we-
Grained into the planning boards, but it's certainly a conversation that perhaps you two people should have with one another.
Yeah, I, I think so. Is there any responsibility by the board to, again, at least maintain or enhance the value of homes if you put in?
Oh, he's a tricky question.
You get crazy and say there's, you know, it's a-
It's a fine line.
Multi-unit hosing or housing or things like that that-
I'm sorry, Ernie?
Review the architectural aspects.
On commercial properties, we do.
Residential too.
I guess typically when it's multiple units, I don't know if we, I know they, developers usually say this is that kind of homes we're presenting in this subdivision, options and things like that, but sort of a general-
Well, we usually have a architectural review committee, subcommittee at this one.
Yeah.
Kind of made it away.
I'm, I'm not familiar with it as it relates to single family residential. I, I live in a neighborhood that does have deed restrictions and I'm pretty familiar with them. And I, I think when you create the entire subdivision and you make a deed restriction part of every parcel that was created as part of that subdivision, then that's binding. But in this particular case, if the subject property was not part of that, then I think that's something that needs to be negotiated privately between the two landowners. I think the planning board can take a look at it and say, you know, doing this or doing that may not fit the neighborhood, not be, may not be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. But I'm familiar with deed restrictions restricting like RVs and above ground pools, fences, satellite towers, things like that.
Yeah, that's a lot of the aspects of this, antennas, RVs.
To my knowledge, that's, that's a private situation.
It's not something we dictated from when this was brought to, before the board. That's something that I believe-
And I've seen planning boards get hung up on that in other communities and would advise against it.
I believe the developer that presented this to the board had the development in mind, the quality of the development, all of those. Right? So, they didn't present that to us for review and approval.
Right.
It's whatever they wanted, basically in terms of a standard for your subdivision. So, the question is, is the applicant interested in maintaining those standards for the balance for these homes?
Okay.
So, I don't know if that's something we-
Is, is, is there a builder? Is anyone interested in commenting on that? I'm not sure if there's builders in mind or curiosity.
Be good for-
David Coquett, I'm the managing member for Comarc. Our intention is to keep the, the look and feel of the neighborhood. I've been unable to locate that document, so I'm more willing to review it and, and take a look and consider that. Our intention is not to impact this neighborhood negatively. It's a, a very nice neighborhood and our intention is to keep that character intact.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's all, all I had. Again, I know some neighbors that, just curious on the, maybe it's my own curiosity, on public notice, what is the requirement for who gets notified and who doesn't? Because I know a lot of folks didn't, I mean, neighbors either that are closer than us did not get it, so just wanted to-
I know you had called and left a message. It does go out to 500 feet and you guys are at the farthest. So, everyone from you down to County Road 9 got one.
Did they? Okay.
So, if you wanted to know if somebody certain was on that list, you can let me know and I'll let you know if that person, if they've changed homes or have an updated-
Got it, okay.
Address. Nothing came back to me, so sometimes I do get postcards that come back.
Right.
Everyone on your street should have gotten one.
All right.
You know, Fatty Way would have been included?
I believe most-
That's right behind, yeah, they're right behind there, so.
May have cut some of it off, but most of them, but if you want it, give me a call. I can definitely tell you who got one.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think that's all I have to share and ask. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else from the public like to address the board or the applicant?
I just wanted to just address the water pressure. We do, we did correspond with Monroe County Water Authority for the laterals. This pressure has 84 PSI static. That's the furthest one up the hill.
Would the flows to those houses, added to the flows of the houses up the hill, affect the houses further uphill?
There was, we did, we did study the pressure at Lot 4, what it would happen with, with flow on out, with the maximum flow on all these houses. And the residual was 77 on Lot 4.
Or a design code standard? I don't, I don't know that.
It was a nine degree, yeah, 9 PSI differential.
I, I think the question though is, right, for the existing homeowners, is there an impact?
Yeah, I think, I think Monroe County Water Authority will take a good look at that.
Monroe County Water Authority does take a look at the entire main from that perspective, but I think the question that's coming up is, is the home at the end of the main, how is that affected by the addition of four additional residential lots? And I think the simulation is they put 15 gallons per minute load on each one of those houses, so that's additional 60 gallons loading and then they, they run the calculations. Another thing that they usually do is they'll, they'll do a hydrant flow test. This is the preliminary part of the subdivision, right, that we're looking at tonight, so-
Yep.
Perhaps if that data could be acquired and shown to us, I think that would be a good thing.
Absolutely.
Will it be part of the secret process?
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure we keep, the public hearing is going to remain open, but is there anyone else here that would have a question for the board? Okay. I think the next step is to draft lead agency resolution. I believe that's this, right? Lisa, that's this one right here, right? Yeah, okay. All right. All right. So, unless anyone else has any more questions, we'll go through that and keep the process moving. So, for the Collier Park preliminary subdivision application, O1 SPS 2023, whereas on or about July 18th, 2023, Secretary of the Town and Victor Planning Board, Planning Board received preliminary subdivision application entitled Collier Park Subdivision, the project proposed at 606 County Route 9. And whereas it is intent of Comarc Holdings LLC, the applicant, to develop six single family residences on 12.925 acre parcel with an existing house located on Lot 2, with a new proposed pole barn on Lot 1 and 2. And whereas the Town and Victor Planning Board preliminarily classifies the project as type 1 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And whereas the planning board as an involved agency has identified the following additional involved agencies and associated approvals, decisions for which lead agency coordination must be conducted. Those are the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Ontario County Department of Public Works, New York State Department of Health, whereas the Town and Victor Planning Board intends to proceed with coordinated review as required for type 1 actions and a lead agency must be established prior to making a determination of significance. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town and Victor Planning Board declares its intent to act as lead agency and directs the Planning Board Secretary to mail the EAF with Part 1 completed by the project sponsor and a copy of the subdivision application to all identified involved and interested agencies notifying them that a lead agency must be agreed upon within 30 calendar days of the date that the environmental assessment form was mailed to them, expressing the Town Planning Board's intent to act as lead agency. Notification will be sent to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Ontario County Department of Public Works, and the New York State Department of Health, Ontario County Planning Department, the Monroe County Water Authority, and the Town of Farmington Water and Sewer Department will also be notified of the pending application as interested agencies. So, on that resolution, do I hear a motion?
Move.
Ernie moves?
I'll second.
All right, Scott, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried 4-0. So, that will move the process along. The final item before us is number seven, the Willis Hill Phase 3. This is not a public hearing. Application O4 FS 2023, owner is Woodstone Custom Homes. Applicant is requesting approval to create 25 lots on a cul-de-sac entitled Arbordale Lane on the west side of Willis Hill Road. This is the last phase in a three-phase project. Phases 1, 2, and 3 will include a total of 81 acres of conservation easement.
I think there's just one sheet. Listening or do we share?
Evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. My name is Cole Peppa-Sergi with Marathon Engineering. With me today is Jeff and Tim Smith from Woodstone Custom Homes, who are the developers. We're here today to request final subdivision approval for Section 3 of Willis Hill Estates. This is located on Willis Hill Road. This is a Section 3 of a large overall development totaling 162 acres approximately in size. Section 3 is 29 acres in size. This was developed under Town Law 278. The preliminary overall approval and Section 1 approval was granted in 2020 and Section 2 in 2021. This is pretty consistent with what was presented back in preliminary overall. The only significant change would be the request that town, or the side setbacks be reduced to 10 feet versus previously 15 feet. This is primarily driven to provide some greater flexibility to the developer when placing lots with, lots with significant grade change or where a large portion of the lot would be taken up by grading and also the way the town code is written, setbacks are taken from the overhang of the building instead of the building face, so this just gives a little bit more flexibility in placing those lots. I'd like to note that there is a tree located on what will be Lot 323. It is our intent to protect that tree throughout construction and then work with the future resident and house design, driveway design to make sure that tree stays and works with the lot. Utilities, water and sewer will be extended throughout Arbordale Lane. Sanitary sewer would stop at the cul-de-sac and then water would continue through to Strong Road off to the west through a Water Authority easement that was granted in Phase 1. Stormwater is also consistent from an overall, it's all collected and conveyed to existing infiltration basins, which were constructed in Phase 2. We are adding an additional forebay that was always planned at the rear of Lot 322 and 323 to help pre-treat some of that stormwater. We have received town comments, including LaBella's comments earlier today. For the most part, they're all very technical in nature, don't, don't have any issues with complying with all of those. There is one comment and condition that I think Jeff would like to just speak on briefly and just kind of give some clarity pertaining to the conservation easements.
Good evening. Jeff Smith, Woodstone Custom Homes. In regards to items 5, 6, and 7 from Wes's this afternoon comments from LaBella. I, I don't have any problem with the nature of the comments in terms, but some clarity, particularly in terms of adding some notation on the subdivision map as to the proximity of the conservation easements on the existing parcels adjacent to the Phase 3. One, there, there would be additional labeling. I know Wes commented on number 6, that the area behind Lot 311, there actually is, there would be 310 and 312 and possibly even a portion of 313 that are adjacent to conservation easements behind them. The point that I think we need to understand though is that these conservation easements are not encumbrances to our Phase 3. It is clearly an informational note that would be added to the subdivision plan because these properties are owned by our Lot number 102 of Phase 1, 101 of Phase 1, and 105 of Phase 1 that are parcels that are adjacent to Phase 3. And that is shown on, on the C 1.0 plan fairly clearly, but it's not shown on the subdivision plan that Wes is commenting to in terms of C 2.1 and C 2.2, which are the two subdivision pages that show the adjacent parcels. So, for one, I'd, I'd want to add some comment that, that Marathon should add the ownership behind Lot 310, 312, and 313 because they all have contained some of our conservation parcels. But I, I think what I want to make clear though is that these conservation easements are not encumbrances on our Phase 3 properties. Their, their purpose is to notify the Phase 1 properties of the limits where they can do things on their property. From Phase 3's perspective, these are property boundaries. Everybody knows what a property boundary, you can go, go beyond it or you're trespassing. So, there is, even in the draft resolution, there was reference to, that I saw this evening, to reflecting conservation monuments. There's, there's really no purpose for conservation monuments on, on our phase ownership. So, hopefully that's cleared everybody. We, I think the building department understands that because there was some confusion even on Phase 2 where there were some notations of conservation easements that really should, shouldn't have been there. They should have just been property corners. So, I, I just want to make that clear.
Oh, just to-
Everybody agree?
Just to make sure I understand what you're saying. The color rendering here, all those are property lines.
They're property lines. They're not easements on those. There's no- That's correct. There's no easements to any of our parcels. I mean- I mean, going back to our purpose, I mean, it's maybe it's a Woodstone thing, but it's my thing, is that the intention was to preserve existing farmland. So we didn't want to carve it up into 20 different conservation easements to go with 20 lots. We instead gave it to 1025 Strong Road. We gave them an extra 40 acres or something like that for essentially no value to speak of, but it has been consistently farmed because of that. And we did the same with Lots 101, 102, 103, and 104. And again, they've been consistently farmed. Now, there are conservation markers on those parcels because they understand that beyond that, it's, they can't build things, they can do whatever. So it's, there's just no real relevance to this Phase 3 regarding conservation markers.
Well, you will have property corner markers.
We'll have property, yeah. And those will be, when we do the subdivision improvements, obviously the boundary lines will be established as well as all the other grade lines and everything else that'll go about. And they'll be maintained throughout the process. We had actually talked to the neighboring 1025 owner, which is Lot 105 of Phase 1. And they understand that there'll be a delineation of property corners along their, along their property lines, so.
Which should, there should be, oh, okay.
That's all. I think, I think we'll coordinate with Marathon in terms of adding notes for all of the owners that are adjacent, a notation that that ownership, there is some conservation to that ownership, but not to imply that it's something to have to do with Phase 3 conservation area. It's the entire project.
Yeah, that was exactly my intent. Hopefully the comments didn't come across as LaBella conveying that Phase 3 had, you know, this conservation easement was encumbering.
But even with the draft resolution that refers to conservation markers, I want to make it clear that really they aren't, aren't a part of Phase 3. They were a part of previous.
You captured it perfectly. You captured it perfectly. Just for, just for communication purposes, just labeling purposes and not encumbering any of the Phase 3 parcels, so.
Well, I appreciate that. It's nice seeing everybody this evening. I haven't been here in a while. And Ernie used to be over there.
Well, we trade off.
You got it. Are there any other questions for me while I'm up here?
Yeah, I do.
Uh-oh.
I see you demolishing a barn.
Well, it's kind, yeah, it's an air, it was where they had the airplane at the air hangar. It's very poor quality. I've never been in it because the person who used to be doing chores for Carol Anderson put a lock on it, so I don't even know what's in it. I think he had a canoe or something in it. But it is of low quality and we will have to demolish it. It's, it's towards the rear of one of the upper lots there anyway.
Yeah, I noticed it on the map.
319.
Has Bebbit taken a look at it?
She did during preliminary.
Yeah.
She commented during preliminary for the whole thing.
Yeah, they, it was examined at one point, yeah. If you'd like it, we could save some parts for you.
I have a neighbor who would like to have that and the airstrip.
Oh, the airstrip. Well, I was encouraging Charlie Hastings who farms it. I said, Charlie, you can mow, you can plow the airstrip. I mean, he was, I was like, there's no more planes here, so I don't, I don't know. I think it's still possibly available, so.
I didn't know Charlie farmed that.
Yeah.
He supplies us hay for our horses, so.
Yeah, Charlie, he's, he's an odd duck, but he's been farming it forever, yeah.
Yep.
And he and his brother John are both good friends of Woodstone. Thank you.
I had a question on the side setback. So you indicated in your letter that the requirement is 15 feet and you want to go to 10 feet and you spoke about the setback being measured to the roof overhang. Is this something that the Planning Board can determine by some sort of an adjustment or a waiver?
I would love to address that this evening.
Gee, sat down too soon, Jeff.
I've asked Kim. No surveyor in Monroe County or Ontario County understands, they measure to the foundation. That's what they do. And yet the code within Victor measures to whatever is above.
Why are you pointing to me?
Well, because it's problematic. And quite honestly, probably 50% of this town doesn't, is not aware of that and they probably have never received variances for that. I think we were caught, for the first 50 homes we did, we didn't do it. Somebody, because we were on a corner lot, they caught an overhang, it was John.
Hargather.
Hargather. And so we moved the house back about 2 feet and it, and it got the overhang was within the setback. And after that, we've been respectful of it. But it's crazy. And so we essentially start with a 15-foot setback and end up with about an 11-foot setback that, because of the overhangs in terms of, so it's problematic. I asked Kim years ago, I said, why, I don't know of another town that does this. And.
It's the way that the code, code enforcement interprets their code.
Well, it's, it's kind of clear. It says, and any overhangs including the pertinences.
I'm not here to argue. I'm not, because I'm not code enforcement, but I know the zoning board has granted in the past variances for that kind of thing. You've probably seen those at the zoning board.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, is this something that they go to the zoning board for? Is it something that the Planning Board deals with?
No, for the, for this particular, that, because it's the clustered subdivision.
Okay.
You can reduce that side setback.
I'm familiar.
Something the Planning Board would do, not the zoning board.
Because of clustered status, okay.
All we're suggesting is because of the code, which looks at overhangs, which can be as much as like 2 and 1/2 feet on each side of a building, that, that now we're aware of it, we would like a little bit more flexibility on the foundation. But ultimately, I think it'd be great if somebody looked at the code and said, let's do what other people do.
I retire, Jeff.
I was waiting for that to come out.
I've heard that's going to happen, too.
Yeah, sooner rather than later.
April.
So, I, so what, so because you could grant the lesser setback, that's why we thought we'd bring it in the final subdivision. Admittedly, we didn't become acutely aware of it until we were through Stoning 10 and then when we went to Dorchester, they had granted narrower setbacks which were more flexible.
So are you asking for setbacks to the foundations versus any of the pertinences?
Well, no, we're asking for the code requirement of a lesser setback, which means that we will, we will be at 10 feet, but the overhangs will be at 12 feet.
So you're asking for 10-foot setback on the foundations, it sounds like?
Or whatever.
A 10-foot setback for whatever.
The fresher.
Right.
Or the foundation.
Right. So if we define setback in this case.
As I saw, as I said to Cole, I said, every engineering map that you've seen draws these boxes to the foundation. And it imagines a 15-foot setback. Well, realistically though, we've got overhangs in which case we were already in violation with a building that set the foundation to that box.
You talking about the boxes on your plan?
Those boxes on our plan are essentially in violation.
But that's not roofline?
If we, no, they're, everybody's, they go by foundations. That's what a surveyor does, goes by foundations. They do foundation surveys when the foundation for a mortgage, they do it when the foundation's built.
I understand.
So to make this simple, could we just say 15-foot setback to foundation for this development?
I think, just say 10-foot, 10-foot setback is what they're looking for.
Or whatever, and they get 12 feet to the foundation and 10 feet to the overhang, is that what you're saying?
The only issue I have with that, right, is that basically says that every development from here on out, we should be granting 10-foot setbacks.
No. It means only those that think ahead get to be having 10-foot setbacks.
Well, but another way to solve that would be to take a lot out, right, and give yourself more, more wiggle room, right, up and down each side of the.
Well, if you had to pay our bills, Al, you would think twice about that.
I know, but again, I'm just trying to be consistent with any other clustered subdivision that basically would have set the precedent that says 10 foot's the new norm.
Well, Dorchester Park is now, I don't know how many, 20 years old almost, and they were granted those setbacks.
Yeah, I think every, every subdivision that comes in as a, as proposed as a clustered subdivision, you have the ability to grant that, that provision for that subdivision in specific.
I understand, but I don't view this as like a hardship condition, special circumstance where basically you open up the door that says likely every developer henceforth, clustered subdivision will say 10 foot's the new setback.
Cole did introduce that also grades are somewhat an issue on the project and that allows us a little more flexibility in terms of.
But you have so much land.
If you need to be on the microphone.
Sorry.
I could hear myself.
Yeah, I'm sure you can.
I could hear you too.
Right. So anyway, as Cole did reflect on some other justifications for it, but I, I mean, it's a pet peeve for me, admittedly, since we've been caught on it a couple of times. Actually, we were caught on Dorchester, we had already signed the contract, we were staking out the lot and somebody else, we had to redesign the house. Actually, it worked within days and we squished it a little bit and did something and reflected the overhangs. It depends on the design of the house, unfortunately, if you deal with that. So it's just straightforward to say, within the code definition of what a setback is, let's go 10 feet.
With a 100-foot minimum lot width, you should have latitude of 2, plus or minus 2 feet either way, under almost all circumstances.
This subdivision in particular has.
Got to get in the microphone.
This, this phase in particular does have a significant grade change to it. And a majority of the lots have, are being eaten up by grade change. So that, this gets exacerbated because of the grade change on those lots in particular.
So I'd like to maybe supplement this discussion. I don't want to end this discussion, but I want to bring up the grading plan. One of our comments specifically had a note, comment number 12, "There are several locations where the residential lots are proposed to include two horizontal, one vertical slopes." For example, lots 304 and 321, "And it seems possible that drainage will sheet flow from these slopes and directly across backyards rather than conform to the adjacent swales." And we want the applicant to review that. But I'd like to see if Suzie could bring up my screen. I just wanted to, because this, this might further the conversation that we're having.
Yeah, and those one-on-two slopes are play into this. I mean, we, we would have liked to be a little bit, not as steep slope, but trying to provide as much space.
I'm puzzled with that comment because in my knowledge of this type of design, you typically want more of a setback between the structures. So you have more room horizontally to take up the slope, not less. Right, understood. So let's just take a look at these two examples here, right? We've got lot 304 and we've got some kind of steep grading over here adjoining Lot, let me see.
303.
303, right? So, and then the same thing with Lot 321 down here, you've got some steep grading to 322. So I can see to Scott's point, if this house, if this square, if this block were 10 feet away from this lot line, you're really not doing yourself a favor with, you know, allowing that reduced setback. However, if you look at the other side of the lot and, you know, if you're allowing, if we need to somehow spread this out or give them more of an opportunity to try to redirect some of this drainage so it's not sheet flowing onto Lot 322, if you can push this, this house to the other direction, we'll call that southwest. I don't know if that's actually southwest, I don't have the north arrow up, you know, to within 10 feet of this lot line, it might give them a little more wiggle, wiggle room to be able to adjust those grades there.
Yeah, and to clarify, it, it's the other side, the up slope side, pushing it that way a little bit.
And so I'd be more in favor of a lot-specific setback exclusion or variance, if you will, than a car blanche, because then there's a very targeted reason why that makes sense versus all 20, however many is, 25 lots.
And I think if you've got a one-on-two slope, that's a tough slope to mow.
Yeah, I was just about to ask that question.
You know, one-on-three is about as steep as you can mow with a, with a type of lawnmower that someone like me would use.
Now, these, the boxes at this plan are drawn at what?
Jeff, look at the microphone.
They're drawn at 15.
Oh, no, the setback.
The setback, what is the setback on that image?
15, yeah.
15. So essentially, the foundation on that plan with current zoning is another, let's say, 17 feet. So that, that's an overhang essentially is what you're seeing on those boxes.
You need to use a microphone, Jeff. It's hard for people online to hear.
I'm just saying that what you're seeing there, I believe is essentially that would be the overhang, not the foundation of the building. So the foundation would be inset from those box lines.
I believe those are drawn at 70 by 50.
Well, the vast majority of these lots do have grade change. There are a few at the cul-de-sac and a few at the entrance levels that don't have substantial grade change. I guess we could identify, although it just becomes problematic, quite honestly, in terms of even trying to plan what houses fit on what lots and, and somebody approaches you to buy a lot and the setbacks are different for every lot. I'll go back and ask that we change the town code to be common sense or we grant some relief with the understanding that these boxes that everybody thinks are foundations aren't foundations. Simple as that.
But what if you made them foundations? It's still, you're giving yourself more room now or a bigger house by putting those as foundations and an overhang. So if you left the foundations with the 15-foot setback, which is the way this appears to be drawn.
If, if you left the foundations with 15-foot setbacks, that would be fine with me.
Because that's what I said earlier, and you said something about 10 feet and.
Well, we were, we were essentially rounding off to be, it could be as much as 2 feet on each side, which would bring it to 11 feet, but it was.
It looks to me like you've done all the grading on this site to some foundation lines. And, and you started off your conversation about that by saying normally you're, you're showing it, the footprint as a foundation and that's what you're grading to. And it looks like the grading was done to a rectangle that provided a 15-foot setback. And I'm assuming that rectangle, it could be, you know, 1 foot, it could be 10 feet overhang, but you know.
If that were the case, I would be pleased to change the proposed setbacks to 15 feet to the foundation line.
That's what I was thinking of.
That would be fine.
That's what I proposed.
So that way we wouldn't be arguing about, okay, this one's got a 3-foot overhang, this guy's got a 2-foot.
Because we, otherwise we have to look at a rake edge versus a full soffit versus the design of the overhangs.
And I don't have a problem personally with that.
I agree.
I would, I would rather just, all right, here's your foundation, the surveyor puts four stakes in the ground for a rectangular house. Now you know you're so many feet away from the, okay, 15 feet, we're made it. Whatever the overhang is, as long as it's not 10 feet.
Our site, our approved subdivision plan would be clear that we would define the setback as 15 foot to the foundation. And, and that, that, Kim, that's okay with you?
She doesn't care, she's retiring.
As long as it's part of our purview, which it sounds like it is with a clustered subdivision.
And honestly.
And then again, if in addition to that, there's a site, a lot-specific challenge that you have, says we need to shift something by another couple of feet.
Oh, if there were, then we, right.
Accommodate a swell or something, then I would be open to that as well.
I would appreciate that, yeah.
I'm hearing there doesn't appear to be objection to a 15-foot setback to the foundation walls.
That would be okay.
Closest foundation, point in a foundation to the side.
That would be okay.
That way, if you have a 3-foot overhang, okay, that's 12.
Right.
But it's more than 10 and it's not a rounded number. It's, this is what the surveyor's going to stake out and whatever is overhead, the architect does, you know, it works.
I would be fine with that and we can change the subdivision paperwork accordingly. And then we will just have to deal with the Building Department when we submit plans to, that it is consistent with the subdivision approval.
But in the long run, I think as a board or as a town, we just need to simplify that for everything. Side setback 15 feet, two foundations. And, and anything that's supported by those foundations within reason, you know.
So I'm just being cautious here and I don't, I'm not objecting to the conversation and the flexibility that the subdivision regulations allow with cluster subdivisions. Just, I don't know, I'm just thinking about any challenges in terms of, are we, is, because the Planning Board doesn't have the ability to write the town code or to modify how a setback is measured, is my understanding, right?
We can advise the town. We can advise the town to make, to look to make a change in the town's construction standards.
For future.
Yes, yes.
You know, ratification.
Which, and that's what I was suggesting is, just like the cul-de-sac provisions and another thing, architectural and all the standards that we go by.
Yeah.
Gets changed in the town code, and it gets updated.
My, my, my hesitation is.
I see what you're saying.
Allowing on the subdivision, this particular subdivision application, saying that this is how the setbacks are going to be measured, right?
This is what we would limit them to.
Saying, say, we want to allow for the 15-foot setbacks measured to the foundation wall, right?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that we can do that as part of the clustered subdivision clustering provisions, right? Because is that actually attempting to modify how the code is interpreted?
I don't, I don't think so, because I, I think that a cl- a clustered subdivision, if that's what this is, gives the planning board the purview to adjust the dimensional requirements as they see fit to maximize, you know, the efficiency of design and the versatility, the flexibility to the developer, right? We, so we could, for example, change the front setback because we think it's better.
Right.
To a 20-foot setback because we think that fits the site better. In this particular case, we're, we're simply modifying the requirement, or we could actually, you know, we could say it's 14 feet or whatever. I, I think, I think we are within our purview to be able to do this. But I think your point is well taken, because it seems to a certain extent like we're, we're enacting code, which I don't believe that we are. I think that we're, we're coming up with, with dimensional parameters that are substantiated by the design and the project that's been presented. That's what I think we're doing.
That's well said, yeah.
Okay, I think, I like the way you said that, too, yeah.
Makes sense. I agree with Scott.
And by the way, if you ever, if you ever go to the Town of Gorham on Can Diggle Lake, they do it exactly the same way with the overhangs in it.
Really?
It's a headache.
Well, that's, you got the little lot next to the little lot all the way along.
It's crazy there, so don't wander into Gorham.
It's where every foot costs you a thousand bucks or something, I don't know, it's crazy.
I think if you went to our Stonington Ridge subdivision that, before we were caught once, there are probably 20 homes there that are in violation that we weren't aware of at the time.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy.
Well, having said all of this, and I don't have a problem going this way, but I, you did kind of create an issue for yourselves with the grading plan that you've got, and you, you are going to have to live with that as you go forward. I, I can't imagine trying to mow it two, two on one slope around a house where something like 321 and 3, 304 are both challenges.
I mean, we, in, in normal conversation with buyers, we would consider one-on-three a very mobile slope, and one-on-two being vegetated some other way with, with some kind of plantings or vegetation that is not going to be mowed. So it, it is something that is within the conversation on these lots, uh, and we're well aware of that, I mean, that's.
Okay.
And unless you're a first-time homeowner, you will be looking for those challenges.
Yeah. I'm spending the kind of money on a house that I suspect it will be here.
I have a question.
We'll just be using the leaker's, I guess.
Across the road, the number 223.
220, yes, 223.
Is that finished?
Uh, yes, it is.
And this is going to, that's going to look that way?
It's inhabited, um, and it's, and the lawn is almost 99 percent, other than one spot. We had to reseed once, but it's fully inhabited.
Well, my wife thinks it's ugly.
No, I don't disagree. I think it was an odd combination of, of, they had a picture that they wanted to reproduce, included that black, it's actually dark blue, is it, Tim? But anyway.
There's one on Modoc Road that looks like.
It's, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's not my favorite either, but it was off-site, so we were a little more flexible.
I know it. I'm just sort of organizing here, but I want to let Wes finish up with what, what he may have, so.
Okay. Um, thanks, Joe. So we talked about the tree that's going to be, going to remain and be protected. I think that's, I think that's great. I've suggested that, um, the town require that the tree protection be installed prior to, you know, any mass grading, um, and maybe, maybe the applicant can provide, and contractor can provide an update on that when the pre-construction meeting is held. Um, the stormwater facility access easement, so the remainder of the comments are pretty detail-oriented. So where the plunge pool is, I think we, we've got a little bit of a concern that we'd like to work through with the applicant in terms of the access, how the town might access that facility in the, in the future, like a practical access in terms of, you know, is it going to be accessible from Willis Hill Road or from Arbordale Lane? It just, the topography's a little bit difficult, so I think we need to just took, take a look at that easement a little bit more. And then. That's exactly right. Yep, that's the location. So it's good to have an easement around that. It's just, you know, how is the town, how are the town maintenance folks going to access that, that facility?
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty, somewhat, all right, a couple hundred feet up from the road, it looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we have some ideas, and, and we'll be discussing with Wes and try to come up with a solution.
Yeah, the grading plan, the steep slopes, we talked about that. And then we also, we'd like for the applicant to, uh, actually do a little bit of a resurvey of the existing Willis Hill Road surface, and be sure that the transition from the new road pavement um, onto the proposed roadway is within kind of the parameters that we're, we're suggesting.
You're talking about like flatness of entry to the drive, the new drive up the hill?
Yes, yeah, the intersecting road slope shall be limited to 2 percent. Uh, with the current grade shown, the first vertical curve should be 220 feet. Um, so just some very detailed kind of technical parameters there. Generally, we don't, we're not, you know, this is very consistent with what you initially looked at. The lot sizes are the, are the, are the same. Um, you know, the dr- the driveways have changed a little bit just because probably there's a refined grading plan now that all, that all makes sense to us. Um, and then I guess finally, the street trees, right? There's generally a requirement for major subdivisions that the, that a landscaping plan be provided. In lieu of that landscaping plan, there's a note, on the note sheet indicating that two street trees per lot would be provided, provided, and, uh, you know, there's, there's no indication in terms of, of species or exact location of those. We just defer that to the planning board if they have, if you wanted to see a landscaping plan, um, you know, but we're fine with a note the way it is. And that's all I've got.
So you said species is not called out? In other words, deciduous versus evergreen?
I didn't identify, uh, any species of trees on, on the plans. I don't know if you have indicated, and maybe I didn't see it.
Um, typically deciduous, I would think.
Historically, we have, we've done it as part of the C of O so that, um, because oftentimes a season is not appropriate for planting the final trees, but we have provided in our subdivisions a mixture of hardwoods, um, ornamentals and pines. Uh, in Phase Two, uh, it has been strictly a mixture of hardwoods and ornamentals of that caliber. We mix them up, uh, we talk to the owners, we give them options of what type of hardwood, maple, oak, whatever, a few species, the same thing with the ornamentals, and then discuss with them placement. Um, they are, you know, placed, we, we have to get them beyond the utility right-ofways, and we have to be cognizant of driveway placement and everything else. So it's, it, it's pretty difficult to do it with a landscape plan ahead of time, but we've been successful in, in doing it as part of the construction process.
Anything else?
Yep.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Um, I think we can move ahead with this now. How do we deal with the 15-foot setback discussion? Do we need to make that as a, a note that you would?
On one condition, maybe?
Yeah, on one of the conditions. Where is it? Yeah, okay.
Whereas number three, right?
Oh.
Whereas three.
A side setback of 10 feet versus required 15 feet. All right, that needs to be changed. So 15-foot setback.
To the.
To the found, to the closest point in a foundation. Just, foundations and lot lines are never perfectly in parallel. Okay, so yeah, the whereas on the next page, Wes? Up to the next page.
Yep.
All right, so. Well, something like whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board allows the 15-foot, will allow the 15-foot setback to be defined as?
You could say defined as or measured to.
Okay, measured to, I like that.
Because these are dimensions that we have control over.
That's you. So measured to the closest point in a building foundation?
Yep.
So let's change that to, instead of a whereas, make it a resolved. Resolved the Town of Victor Planning Board allows.
All right. Makes more sense. I was just trying to figure out how to reword it with the whereas, and it doesn't make sense. So as resolved, the Town of Victor Planning Board will allow the 15-foot side setback, uh, to be measured to the closest point in a building foundation, um, period, and be it further resolved. Okay, now the first page, what did you have, Wes, in number three?
Um, I've just, I've indicated here, I've struck the 10, and with side setback of 15 feet to the closest foundation versus.
This is the 15-foot setback.
Foot setback.
As defined in the code?
Yeah.
Person or anything's setback.
Okay.
That must be during the preliminary, so that's okay. All right, got that. Anything else? Anyone need to tie mine up? All right. With that, I'll proceed with this. Um, so Resolution Willis Hill Estates, Phase Three, Application 4 FS 2023, whereas Planning Board made the following findings effect. Um, changing number three, it is the intent of the applicant to create 25 new home sites on 28.9 acres for Phase Three under New York State Town Law Section 278 clustering provisions, as well as pursuant to Section 184, Article Five, clustered projects of the Town, Victor Town Code, with a side setback of 15 feet to the closest foundation uh, versus the required 15-foot setback as required in the code established during the preliminary subdivision approval. Um, and then we have up to number 11 listed, uh, and the next page, top, instead of the whereas, we're calling it resolved, the Town of Victor Planning Board will allow the 15-foot side setback to be measured to the closest point in a building foundation, and be it further resolved that the final subdivision application of Jess Smith, Woodstone Custom Homes, 15 Fishers Road, Suite 202, Pittsburgh, New York, major subdivision entitled Willis Hill Estates, Phase Three, drawn by Marathon Engineering, dated July 18th, 2023, received by the Planning Board July 18th, 2023, Planning Board application, number 4 FS 2023, be approved with the following conditions. Uh, number one, two, three are standard, number four, that the comments in a letter dated August 22nd, 2023 from Lobella Associates be addressed. Uh, number five, the comments from Code Enforcement Officer dated July 22nd, 2023 be addressed. Number six, the comments from the Town of Farmington Sewer Department dated August 7th, 2023, and August 8th, 2023 be addressed. Number seven, that the comments from the Town of Victor Stormwater Program Manager dated August 1st, 2023 be addressed. And number eight, I think we established we don't need conservation easement markers, is that correct?
Yes.
So I can cross that out? So we'll leave it at seven. Conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to, one, that the major subdivision comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section Four. Number two, two-year maintenance bonds shall be provided by the developer to the town for all improvements to be offered to the town for dedication. Maintenance bonds shall be written by a surety license to do business in New York State, and they shall be in the amount of 10 percent of the final construction cost as determined by the engineer town. Number three, that approved subdivision maps, including conservation easements, lot consolidations and lot line adjustments shall be subject, submitted in digital format, AutoCAD 202 or latest version, um, effective, we should change that, it's got to be a later version date than this, effective January 1st, 2004, per Town Board Resolution 193 of June 23rd, 2003. Number four, that a Town of Victor Highway Work Permit be obtained. Number five, that pre-construction meeting shall be held prior to the start of construction, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board's secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. So with those modifications to the draft resolution, do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll move it.
Scott moves.
Good.
Bernie seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried 4-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and dedication. It's tough staying up late at night to do these things.
All right, that is the end of the agenda this evening.
I'll move to close.
Move to adjourn by Al.
Second.
Second vice, Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a great evening, everyone. Get some sleep.
Joe, I thought that was a good resolution to the 15-foot.